Yeah, I can kick people off. No problem. So really, it affects me.
Right, because and also too, it's two separate logins.
My problem is that we will go back into an open session at the end of the closed session.
Yeah, so we open an open session, we go to a closed session, and then come back into open session.
Right, but I mean if they're out, then I don't know what to tell them, so.
Yeah, I don't know how to alert people that we've gone back into open sessions. That's the tricky thing about remote participation.
Yeah, I don't know how to do that, so.
Let me just announce.
Well, worst case scenario, they can come to me and ask me for the link and I can send it to them and then they can watch it.
Is there, is there a waiting room?
They, they, they show as attendees.
Right, but once they're let in.
I don't have to let them in, Jessica, just confirm that. So they may be listening right now, bro, I know.
Yeah, they're, they're, they are.
Okay.
Or at least they can.
Well, I'm just wondering if we had a waiting room where people could go.
Mobile home parks.
We could let them back in.
I have the option to.
We gotta get that up.
Remove, rename.
Try them. Try as I can, man.
Right, we're actively.
But they are the largest.
This is too late in the game for me to figure it out, I just want to.
No, no, I was just trying to brainstorm how we can do it.
Over like a.
Sylowson Farms down the road.
Pardon?
Sylowson Farms or Syl, yeah, Sylow Farms.
Sylow Farms.
Yes.
More than a, more than a Meyer and Menards, more than a Gelman and.
And I did that part on.
More than anything on Jackson Road. More than Mark Brazel's house.
Yeah, believe it or not.
More than Jonathan's property.
Very soon.
No, yeah, I was just trying to remind you, though, remind me.
Yeah, well, I kind of shop for the important.
Did you get my message? Okay. Foster Grant. Question of when we might get.
No, these are gray vans.
I'm just sitting here so I can have a table.
I sat up in there because I can't hear a lot of times.
Don't you gonna need a table?
Yeah.
Tomorrow, I'll send it to you and just see. It was all.
I've been picking up trash and reals, by the way.
Yeah, I do.
Today. Plus some idiot from your.
It's always that sort of time.
You're right.
We don't even know.
Question. We get one liquor license for $50,000.
For that, one that we did, are doing for that place over there. We average anywhere between 18 and 20 million years.
Yeah.
We do it on that, if I'm not blocking, of course. I left another bag.
It's just been around a couple of years. We can either add to that.
Can I turn your sour?
It's not a closed session, so let's be.
Who was the chair of the chair?
Two, two or three.
Okay, okay, okay.
The drain there.
There was like a thing for a while about.
It's gonna be the chair.
No, I haven't moved over.
Jessica's not gonna be here, so I just. I don't want you to get confused or anything, because you know. My, my.
I actually do.
I love it.
It's hard to put something together. Well, you have to maybe have a.
Okay. So I'm always just, you just printed that stuff off, let me. Oh, here it is. It's like.
I did.
I also know sometimes I don't get all my voices, so. Well, I'm sure he didn't hear it.
I did.
All right, let's see here.
I, I was gonna forego Mike Homier to panelists, I've done it a few times, but I don't see him moving over there, so I don't know.
I had to throw this to him last.
Are you having trouble doing that, or?
No, I'm not having trouble, I clicked it, but he's not.
Oh, he, he was, he's gonna be arriving at the last minute, he is coming from another.
Oh, okay, well, I see him on Zoom.
Oh, okay.
So I tried to remove the pan, and I have it.
He may have logged in. Preparation.
Oh, maybe he's not looking at, I don't know if he has to accept it or not.
I know. Why don't we get started?
Okay, ready?
Well, that clock's fast, so it's now five o'clock.
Somebody drop it again.
Welcome. Wel- welcome everyone to a special meeting of the Board of Trustees. I would like to call a meeting to order, and we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'll have a roll call. Are you gonna sit in for Jessica during the roll call and stuff?
I was gonna ask you, like.
Yeah.
Well, this is recorded for the, for Cheryl, right?
Yes, I guess we can, I can just do the roll call.
I mean, I don't mind helping out if, if, if asked to as well.
Okay, we'll, we'll figure, we'll figure things out as we go. I, I think that Jessica's decision not to attend for health reasons was made at the last minute, so I don't think Mary was asked to be here.
But do we have just a, just a, an agenda, not the packet, and then we can write in just the pertinent? Because really, for minutes, we only need the very basic, and then we could, yeah. You wanna do it?
Sure.
I can do it, okay. Oh, no, if you can do it. Well, you used to be a clerk, so, yeah, yeah.
You've done this before, haven't you?
Yeah.
All right, you can put on your clerk hat.
Cut out of that one.
The thing is with the roll call, so we're gonna, I'll have to figure that out. Because I don't have the sheets that she would normally have for the roll call. But we're not gonna have many.
No, I don't think that for this meeting, they won't have them. All right, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. By the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Trustee Noel, please call the roll, right?
Hathaway.
Present.
Palmer.
Present.
Flintoff, absent. Brejo, absent. You gave me the wrong.
It's got, it's got an errant, it's got an errant name in it, it should say trustee Kery.
Yes. Kery.
Present.
Noel, present. Riser.
Present.
I said Jerome on there.
Oh, wow, that's outdated, isn't it?
Yeah, this is an old template, I'm guessing. Okay, so we have adoption of the agenda, there isn't much of an agenda, but, and we cannot stray from the announced purpose of the meeting. But is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I would move the agenda.
Moved by Riser.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Scored by Palmer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, agenda is approved. Public comment, this is a time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any matter under the purview of the Board of Trustees. Please, if you are present and you would like to speak, please come forward, and each person has three minutes, and then we'll turn to those who are participating remotely. Trustee Riser, are you prepared to be our timekeeper?
I am.
Okay. Trustee Riser, are you prepared to ignore the time limits for me?
A little bit, a little after.
How much money are you gonna?
You're pretty good.
So hi, my name's Jonathan Greenberg, oh, by the way, JRVP, if you don't know what it is, you should find out. My name is Jonathan Greenberg, I used to live at 6250 Park Road for the entire period of the SAD. My address has changed, but my house hasn't. If that's confusing, tell it to UPS. Over the last two years, I had to declare shenanigans on this board about two years ago. And since that time, three people have resigned, and three reasonable individuals have replaced them on the board, balancing the full assault on residents' interests. There's been additional transparency and accountability, and we still haven't hired a finance director, but I guess that's kind of a somewhere over the rainbow request. We've seen a lot of mistakes, errors, cover-ups, bad investments, lack of transparency and accountability, some really bad audit results, and as I pointed out, full-on shenanigans with, in our money department, in our treasure. There's no accountability, it seems, there's been game playing, there's been some very bad behavior that we will see in the future once we insist and have a full forensic audit. Please conduct a full forensic audit, five to 10 years. I don't know what we are holding off for, we've had significantly bad results, we need to find out if indeed there were deals cut or finances moved around inappropriately. Finally, I've paid the SAD fee for two lots, close to $2,000. I've not received any improvements at all to my road in the 10 years, despite it being on the list, it was the one section of road that wasn't done, Park Road between Zeeb and Stabler. I don't know why, there was this feeling that it's gonna be paved any day now, so why spend any money on it? Well, it's a mud pit, I've been complaining about this at these meetings for at least three years. People have an idea that that's a dirt road, a stone cared-for dirt road, it's a big mud pit, is what it is. I've not received any benefit, in fact, because you've left it alone for 10 years, I've received anti-benefits because it was left rot for 10 years, because, you know, I had two to four cars running on that every day. It's a lot of front-end work. I want my money back because I receive no benefit from this SAD. That's the rules. I know that recently, we spent a lot of money trying to come up with a conclusion that meets our facts, instead of moving to a conclusion drawn from the facts. Sorry if that's confusing. What I'm saying is, you guys were looking for a result, and you paid an attorney thousands of dollars to determine that this is the outcome of this SAD money. You want to keep that money for your own uses, there's $2 million involved, 1.95, whatever the number is, that is required to be returned to the residents. Oh, I'm 35 seconds over. Don't take this meeting behind closed doors. You owe it to the residents of the township who have and have not received benefit from the SAD to discuss this openly? That's my point. Thank you. Bones it all, thank you. Awesome, thank you. Anyone else present who would like to speak during public comment?
Well, first off, I'm Pollock Gloversen. And lived in Syo for a long time, over 20 years. Anyway, besides SADS and all the other issues in the township, I'm gonna talk about this closed meeting ideas and using our taxpayer money to fund Foster and Swift. It hasn't had very good results when I did a quick Google search on their, their firm with having people enjoy transparency and easy financing. And I haven't been happy with a lot of what was going on with this attorney situation. And I've never seen this as much as I have with this particular leadership. And I think a lot of people, they may not speak up about it, a lot of people are worried. I've been told to be careful, and I think that's really interesting. Charles Gelman told me to be careful, the onsite sewer people that are now not a sewer, you know, the whole Trailwoods situation. And I go, the ordinances that you have, and, and getting down to those poor older people in Parkwood. They have come for an entire year. They've had to hire attorneys. I've never seen so many people in this township have to hire attorneys, no wonder you want to take this stuff behind closed doors. And it's like a banana republic that you're running here, and I don't like it. And that's the most important thing to me, is the lack of transparency and utilizing our money to pay this attorney to keep things from us, redacting them, and it's like classified documents, there's something very, very wrong about that.
Hey, everybody. First off, I did see that there was additional documents added to the agenda this afternoon again. If we could in the future, please not add things at the last minute to the agenda, especially when there's more than one document in that subitem that I just discovered a few minutes ago. I don't, you know, if everyone here got a chance to see all of the things that were added into that. Are we gonna keep this as an open meeting, just another question for somebody to answer at the end? Because it doesn't specifically state that on the agenda, whether it's going to or not. If we are going to move to a closed meeting, I have checked it, as everyone else has. They're just an interesting thing for road funding, and just funding of things overall. Mr. Riser, I know was present last night at the Planning Commission meeting, it was fascinating to hear from Pittsfield Township Supervisor about how their community's been able to build a lot of things that we aspire to, be it pathways, be it natural areas, and a lot of other things. Primarily through community development block grants and other grant funding, as well as some other general fund, but taking some alternative funding mechanisms that we could use here. Obviously, we help with that, but it's an interesting statement. Finally, as with everybody else, I ask that you return the remaining money back to Syo taxpayers. My property's on Jackson Road, I didn't receive any special benefit being on Jackson Road, I should receive none. Certainly, other people in the township may have, and I understand that, but I didn't, and I still had to pay it for property that didn't receive anything. As you return that money in the next 45 days, it's both good rain and solid turn to do so. Thanks, everybody.
My name is Rochelle, I'm a resident of Syo, I'm at 4742 Park Road, I'm right across from the DTE substation there. So I just, my neighbor Chris, which spoke with Mr. Hathaway earlier, and I spoke with you last summer about our section of the road. Since I, I've got the township agreement here for the road pulled up, I was told that's what's being talked about now, so. In the email.
Just to, just to clarify, your neighbor contacted me about the condition of Park Road, and this is the section, and Park Road has got areas on both sides of Zeeb. This is, your section is the section on the east side of.
Correct, we're from the pavement to Parkland Plaza. So I just want to make a case for, for us, and I, I know on the document, it says there's gonna be some drainage issues. I am on the north side of the road, and the way the road is, we have a, and he's at the end on Cottage Lane at the end, so we share like a drive almost. We have, every time it rains, water just floods into our basement because of the way the road is cambered and the drainage, there is no drainage where we are, it just comes right down. It pools at his house, and it comes right into our basement through the door. We also have had issues ever since the U of M facility back on Parkland Plaza's been put, and the office building at the end of our road now, we have non-residential traffic. I have pictures of huge semi trucks with tons of equipment for that new build that's going behind the apartments back there that use our road to get from Zeeb to there instead of using Jackson Road. We have tons of traffic constantly that are using it to get from the highway to Parkland Plaza to get back there, that make the right turn back there. I guess our road is just starting to get worn down, the erosion is a huge problem now that it's having to be graded constantly. I've been at this address for 13 years now, and we have never, other than in the last year or two, have had to have our road graded so much and so many problems the day after they grade. They just came through today, we had a six-inch huge hole in front of our drive, you know, and they graded it flat, so you have to imagine the amount of erosion that's happening as well. We have a huge runoff at the hill as they've been grading, at the top of that really big hill, if you're familiar with the area, I know you are, Mr. Hathaway. It's now starting to get smaller and smaller and smaller, and it's a blind hill, so when you're coming from me into their direction, you can't tell if there are cars coming at you. And it's starting to enclose to where, when it rains, it takes out a good quarter of the road, pretty deep into almost like a big drainage, and it's not passable by two cars. So I guess my case, I'm just here to mention what our experience is as residents of just that part of the road, which I know the other part is pretty bad, I don't even go that way anymore to get to Menards, but I'm gonna be honest. I, I don't even bother, especially that tiny little bridge, it's terrifying, honestly, it's so old, so, but it's just, the traffic has not become residential anymore. We have, with the swim club there, it's been, oh, I'm so sorry.
That's right.
With, I, just real quick, with the swim club, we've always had higher traffic between the two holidays, but now it's just kind of out of hand with the new businesses, and it's just not residential anymore, just for us.
Michelle, I live in your neighborhood, I live on the well, so I know exactly what you're talking about. So I was at, just down your, your area, the, over the weekend, in the ditch, looking at the culvert that is wearing away. I'm also the chair of the Road Advisory Committee, so if you could email me at jkery@syotownship, and then we can connect from there. J Kery, K E R R Y, at syotownship.org. Okay, thanks.
Or I, I sent the link to Chris, to the page on the website for the Roads Advisory Committee, so you could either email directly to Jillian, or you could do the whole Roads Advisory Committee. Okay.
Thanks.
I think that's everyone who's here present, is there anyone participating remotely who would like to speak during public comment?
I see no hands raised.
Really?
Oh, hold on. Really?
You conjured them up.
Thanks for drinking.
Up next, Kathleen Brandt is first, following that is David Reed. Kathleen?
Hi, Kathleen Brandt, Syo Township taxpayer. I want to point out that Foster Swift has on their webpage a legal opinion about the ability to go into closed session, and they talk about written opinions. And the only thing you would be able to discuss is what was in that written opinion, so I caution you about going into closed session and discussing road SAD funding, whatever, in a broad sense, because even Foster Swift recognizes that that would not be right. This was written by Ann Surinak, something like that her name is. Also, I want to point out that the Board has the ability to waive the client attorney privilege on a memo written by Mike Homier. In fact, you could do that tonight. My understanding is, he's the one that asked for the privilege. That doesn't seem to be in the best interest of Syo Township residents, and I would encourage you to waive that, let's see what he had to say. And let's keep this an open meeting, so we can hear what he has to say. Quickly, I received no benefit from the 2013 road SAD, none whatsoever, and I'm also asking that you refund the excess money. Also, we do have a municipal attorney on this board, and I would hope that he would provide his expertise on the issues of roads. To date, I haven't heard that, and he seems to acquiesce to Mr. Homier. Now, Mr. Homier seems to have a business model to give bad advice, and then to make even more money by defending when a lawsuit is filed. He's done it repeatedly. I don't trust Mr. Homier, I believe he works in the best interests of Mr. Hathaway. I do not trust Ms. Hathaway going into closed session and following the rules. So please don't do that, thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Up next is David Reed, following David Reed is Pam Boyd. Go ahead, David.
Yes, David Reed, Syo Township. Like John, I have paid $85 a year, but for three parcels totaling $2,550, and have received no special benefit as required by Act 188. I think Act 188 uses the word special benefit, I think it's six times, not a perceived benefit, but a special benefit. One of my parcels is landlocked, inaccessible from any road, and completely unbuildable, yet I was forced to pay the SAD. As a side point, in spite of all efforts, I have been unable to find the original project list the board was presented in 2013. All project lists I have found, including the one that's online on the website, has a column entitled Township Cost. Now, that is the actual billing from the Wasno County Road Commission, so that would not have been on the original list. Though unfortunately, I believe the original list does not exist. Now, I understand that attorneys often give more credence to opinions from other attorneys and are indifferent, or even deaf, to opinions or information from non-attorneys, regardless of the amount of research that went into the gathering and study information. I know this from many conversations with my father, a civil attorney for 45 years. May I remind you that attorneys are human, mostly, and are capable of making mistakes, breaking the law even. Witness Michael Cohen, he has paid a heavy price for doing his boss's bidding. I would ask all of the board members, attorneys included, to carefully read Act 188 and draw your own conclusions. As a member of the 2013 Roads Committee and Township Board, I can attest to the fact that there was no expectation of using the excess funds for projects that were not originally included in the project list for 2013. In fact, Act 188 forbids adding projects after the rolls have been set. It is true that Act 188 provides for the funding of drainage, ditches, sidewalks, culverts, and various other projects. However, none of those projects were included in the original list. The only work that was on the list was repaving of a few roads and gravel list for the rest. Park Road was on the original list, but only for gravel work, not paving. Your only option at this point is to return the funds to the current property owners of the approximately 6,100 parcels that were included in the SAD as a credit on the 2023 winter tax bill, as stipulated in Act 188. To do otherwise would be a breach of public trust. This meeting should not be held in closed session, it involves and affects all township residents, and all township residents should be aware of this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Pam Boyd?
Thank you, Pam Boyd, Syo resident. If you polled Syo residents to ask if their property received a public benefit in the 10-year SAD, I would expect most residents would say that they haven't. Please return our money, thank you.
At this time, I see no hands raised.
All right, then. We don't have any minutes to approve at this time. And we don't really have unfinished business, so we're moving to new business, which is discussion of the Township-wide Road SAD. This morning, there were, there was a memo and a number of documents posted, and an additional memo in response, and a couple of documents were added to the packet and this afternoon. If you would like to access those materials, they are all available on the Township website, anyone who is either here or. for anyone who is either here or watching from home. And I think we have with us now, I'm hoping, Mike Homier?
At some point, we're going to discuss going into closed session, and there has to be a roll call to go into closed session.
Yes, yeah, we, I'm not going to make the leap to hyperspace without that, yeah.
I wanted to be sure with a little bit of discussion here.
Sure, absolutely. I think the intent is to have some discussion in an open meeting, and then if the Board deems it appropriate to discuss the memo, Attorney-client Privilege Memo, then we would make a decision and have a vote before we did that. So is Mike with us?
Yes, he is. Are you going to start with discussion of Board members?
Yeah, well, I, I thought we'd bring Mike in and clarify what we would like to talk about in open session first, and sort of, I'd like to have his advice on sort of where to draw the line before we cross over into things that are of the confidential memo. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think several of us might have some opinions on it, too.
Sure, absolutely. I, I, I know we have lots of expertise at the table. So, Mike, are you, are you able to join us?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Although your, your audio sounds a little echoey.
Yeah, sorry, I'm in the car driving.
Ah, well, be careful. So we, we have now reached the point where we're talking about the Township-wide SAD, and you probably heard me a moment ago, I, I'm hoping that you can help us sort of define where the line would be before we would cross over into needing to go into closed session.
Well, I think it had been stated earlier, I don't own the privilege, right? The privilege belongs to the township, and so the township could waive that privilege. I don't necessarily recommend it before we have an opportunity to discuss the Attorney-client Privilege Memo. And I'll, I'll put it this way, although I don't necessarily, I'll let the Board decide whether or not it ultimately waives that privilege. We're very circumspect about doing so because, you know, like most people who might engage a lawyer, those communications with their attorney are private. They are confidential. That's no less confidential than if I am speaking to the Board about the contents of a legal opinion that we have drafted for the township. So, but it, it is also true that if we adjourn to closed session, our, our conversation, our discussion is limited to those subjects that are raised in that memo. I know that all of you have seen a copy of that memo, and so I'm happy to adjourn to closed session to discuss it, and then, you know, afterwards, if the Board wants to waive privilege, they can do so and, and talk about the contents of that memo. Again, I'm very cautious about doing so because the Attorney-client Privilege is one of the most sacrosanct privileges that there are.
I'm just trying to, I think part of, part of what I'm weighing is, I think there is a desire to have some discussion in open, in an open meeting with the public, and then possibly to go into closed session to talk about some of the elements of the, of the memo. I'm just trying to figure out how to draw the line between those. Do you have a suggestion, Trustee?
I have an idea. What we could do is go into closed session and just discuss the relevant comments in the memo, and then come back out into open session, and I think the majority of our conversation would be in open session.
Well, the difficulty is that we'd have to ask everybody to leave, both from remote participation and in person, in order to go in. We have technology and texts and all that kind of new stuff, so. So how will we know, how, how would, would you propose that we would notify the members of the public that we are back in open session?
We could pick one of these people.
Uh huh. Send him a text?
We could ring it on a cell phone. We have cell phones.
Yeah.
Okay.
We can also put it, I mean, we'll go back into open session. They can be checking their meeting, the Zoom meeting, and that, see where an open session. I mean, there are multiple ways, but we could text one of these people.
Yeah, I just, I think inviting people to sort of pop in and out like the hokey pokey is, it's kind of risky in terms of maintaining closed session.
We don't get to go into closed session at all. But we can just focus.
Do you estimate maybe, and how long would it take for closed session? Maybe 20 minutes, 15 minutes, half an hour?
About 1:00 in the morning. No, really.
You have a 7:00.
Yeah, I estimate 15 to 20.
And the truth, and I can text you to let you know.
I'll sit in my car at work until you guys are done.
We'll give you a way.
Or just burn some black smoke. Although.
Like a pope.
I think that's what he was. So who's our point of contact? Is it? I'll text my group, they'll fanned it out.
John and Jonathan? Okay.
Will you text him then?
I, I'll text.
Okay. Well, in that, in that case, would someone like to go into closed session for the purposes of discussing the Attorney-client Privilege Memo from Foster Swift? Were you moving that?
He did.
No, I said, would someone like to make?
Oh, I thought you were moving it.
I can do it if no one else wants to.
I'll move it.
All right. Move by Palmer. Support by?
Support.
Okay, support by Kerry. And I believe we need a roll call for this motion.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Kerry?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Yes. Before we go to break, if anyone is listening and doesn't know me and wants notification, my cell phone is 734-276-8966. Text me, and I'll let you know when we're back in session.
Can you say it one more time?
Operators are standing by.
Recording stopped.
Oh, Jonathan, do you want your message?
Oh, did I?
He's going for the low, low.
I, I.